We'll now call this meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's come out tonight for the meeting, that's out in the audience, and also those that are viewing the meeting on G-10 television. I'd like to begin the meeting tonight by having a young man, Davis, if you'd come up front here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody would stand, please.
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, as always, we want to pause and we want to give you thanks. Give you thanks for this beautiful day, your loving kindness to each of us and to our city of Jacksonville. We pause this evening to give thanks for the life and the service of Councilmember Fannie Coleman. She was truly a public servant who loved this city and loved the citizens. We pray for her family during this time of loss. We pray for those who've been impacted by Hurricanes Harvey and Irma and those in the path of Hurricane Maria. We pray that you would be with them as they try to put back together their lives after such disaster. And we also pray that you would continue to protect this coastal area that we enjoy and live in as citizens of Onslow County. We pray for our service members who serve us here and around the world. Bless them and bless their anxious families. And as always, give guidance to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Well, thank you, Davis. This is Davis Benedict who led us into place tonight, and you'll be hearing more from him shortly. Counsel, if I've gotten a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting, then I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're going to do a few presentations now, and I'm going to come around front. First I'd like to ask Mr. Robert Kimbrough and members of the Onslow County Cross State Cancer Support Group to join me up front, please. Bring all, bring everybody. The city is pleased to present a proclamation naming September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And I'm going to read this, well, I'll read this proclamation to you. Whereas prostate cancer is the number-one cancer among men and the second-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among men in the United States, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates around 161,360 new cases of prostate cancer this year, and about 26,730 people will die from it. And whereas men who are educated about this deadly disease will more likely to have, be more likely to have screenings for early detection when the cancer is treatable. And whereas the Onslow County Prostate Cancer Support Group is a group of survivors that prides themselves on offering help, sharing personal experiences, and who strive to build a supportive community through awareness and education. And whereas the Onslow County Prostate Cancer Support Group works closely with physicians, healthcare providers, and the National Cancer Organization in educating the general public and providing services to survivors. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Jacksonville. And I encourage all men in our community to learn about prostate cancer and to speak to their healthcare provider about screening for prostate cancer. And I'm going to present this. Nice framed, oh, got some dust on it. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor, on behalf of the Onslow County Prostate Cancer Support Group. We first of all, I'd like to give you one of our hats.
Thank you, sir.
That we give to new members when they come in, we give them that hat, and there's a pin on here for prostate cancer, and pink is for breast cancer. Men do get breast cancer also. And here's a ribbon for you.
Thank you.
For your own. And here's a brochure, which we did give to all the council members, a brochure of what we do and why we do what we do. So I personally like to thank you on behalf of our organization.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your advocacy, for this very, very good cause here, to bring this awareness.
Thank you so much.
Again, thank you so much for coming out tonight. It's great for all of you to come out in support of making this awareness. It's very important. The next proclamation, I'm going to have Mr. Davis Benedict come back up again with his mother, Kathy Benedict, for the daughters of the American Revolution. Davis, of course, is a member of the children of the American Revolution. We're going to recognize Constitution Week. I'm very pleased to present a proclamation recognizing September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. But before we do, I want to ask Davis, who is a member of the children of the American Revolution, to step forward to the microphone and to give us a recitation of the preamble to the Constitution.
We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and to our posterity, to redeem and establish this Constitution for the United States of America.
Okay. I see a big flag coming. I see a flag, and red, white, and blue, Ms. Tallman. Right, anywhere you want to, Ms. Tallman.
Here, Susan, stand by your grandson. I'll stand by the mayor.
In recognition of Constitution Week, we're providing a proclamation that's signed by me, and I would like to read it aloud if you will indulge me. Whereas the Constitution is the central instrument of government and the supreme law of the United States of America, and whereas September 17th, 2017, marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by our founding fathers during the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is imperative that we read and study the greatest document of human liberty and protect the freedoms set forth in the Bill of Rights, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2017, as Constitution Week in the city of Jacksonville, and I ask all our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms granted us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Thank you so much for bringing this to the attention of folks that we never forget this founding document that you recited the preamble so well. Thank you, Davis. I appreciate that. And I'm going to present this proclamation to Davis. Does anybody want to speak? Okay. Thank you very much for doing this. You did a great job on that recitation. Ms. Morgan, Ms. Tallman, thank you very much for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. Next, we have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, and I think Chief Hayes, you're here. If you'll bring yourself as well as anybody accompanying you. I see we got somebody accompanying you. Good evening. How you doing? Hey, Sean. October 8th through the 14th is Fire Prevention Week. During this time, the Jacksonville Fire Department works hard to motivate Jacksonville's residents to keep themselves, their families, and the community safe from fire. And I have a proclamation that I would love to read here in recognition of Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the city of Jacksonville is committed to ensuring the safety and the security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas fires killed approximately 3,280 people in the United States in 2015, and fire departments in the U.S. responded to more than 1,345,500 fires. And whereas Jacksonville fire personnel are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Jacksonville residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to remind us all of the simple actions we can take to keep our homes and families safe from fire during Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all citizens to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Jacksonville Fire Department. And I'm going to present you with this proclamation. Do either of you wish to say a few words? Okay, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services, we'd like to take a minute to remind our citizens of the importance of emergency planning. As the mayor said, this year's Fire Prevention Week theme is "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out." So please take a few moments to sit down with your families and look over your emergency plans, make sure you have two ways out of your home, and try to practice those monthly with your children to ensure your family's safe. Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to our first section of public comment for the evening. I didn't see the list. Anyone sign up? Does anyone wish to speak at public comment this evening? Okay. Seeing no one, I'm going to go to the adoption of the minutes and the consent items.
If we could remove item eight from the consent and move it to non-consent, we have an additional comment we need to give counsel on that item.
Okay, all right. Does that need an action by the council?
We approve.
For the consent items, okay. All right, with that in mind, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adopt the minutes and the consent items with the stated moving of the number eight to the non-consent agenda.
Move to adopt the minutes for August 22nd, workshop meeting, 22nd regular meeting, and September 5th, joint city and county meeting, including the moving of the item under consent, item eight, move it to the regular agenda.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That carries. Next, for item number one, or number nine tonight, it's a special use permit and type three site plan for Abra Body &amp; Glass at 2301 Lejeune Boulevard. This is a quasi-judicial matter, so at this time, I'm going to swear Mr. Jeremy Smith in. You swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
I do.
Let me say, recess the regular meeting, open the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated, the number nine for the council's review and consideration is a public hearing for a special use permit and type three site plan for Abra Body &amp; Glass located at 2301 Lejeune Boulevard. You'll note the vicinity map on the screen and your agenda's before you. Some of you may recall, a few years ago, Abra Body &amp; Glass came before the council and got an approval for the neighboring site identified on the aerial. Abra Body &amp; Glass did a total renovation and remodel of that site, and like any good business, is growing, and purchased the adjacent property and is now coming with an expansion. This property is zoned, corridor commercial, as is the original property and all adjacent properties. The properties to the north and to the east are vacant at this time, and across Lejeune Boulevard is, of course, Camp Lejeune. The subject property is 1.33 acres and is proposed expansion to, as said before, a 2,738 square foot automotive paint and body shop. This will work in combination with their existing site, but as proposed, they wanted it to be able to exist on its own, so in the future date if they ever wanted to sell off or potentially have a different type of business in there, that it could exist on its own. At the September 11th Planning and Advisory Board, the planning board recommended approval along with staff, it was a conditional approval with one condition, that the revised site plan be submitted and meet TRC comments. And if that were the case, if they do resubmit a revised plan, that will make findings of fact D founding affirmative. Therefore, your recommendation is approval of the site plan with condition based on findings of fact A, B, C, E, F, and G being founding affirmative, and D will be founding affirmative when the revised site plan is submitted and approved. Mr. James Lewis from Charles Riggs and Associates Surveying is here along with staff. We'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
(inaudible) questions?
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you very much.
All right, this is a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present that wishes to further speak on this matter? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And counsel, you're being asked to consider the proposed request.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the special use permit and site plan with the condition based on findings of facts A, B, C, E, F, and G being founding affirmative, and item D will be founding affirmative once the revised site plan is reissued.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? We'll go back now to consent agenda, item number eight, that's now on the non-consent agenda. This is acceptance for the 2017 North Carolina Governor's Crime Permission Grant to, it's a continuation of the police crisis counselor.
Mayor and members of the council, you'll recall that last year, the city was very fortunate that we received a grant to fund a crisis counselor position. That has been extremely successful. It has assisted the police department in a number of matters, specifically in dealing with folks with mental challenges. The paperwork is currently in the mail. We are recommending that you authorize the mayor and the city attorney to review the final documents, and if they are in an acceptable form, to authorize them to sign those grant documents. The federal fiscal year is September 30th, and the current grant runs out at that time. We do not have a city council meeting between now and September 30th, so we are recommending that you authorize the mayor and the city attorney to sign the grant once it comes in. That will extend this for a two-year period with no obligations for city funding nor any obligation for the city to continue funding the position once the grant expires. Again, the paperwork is in the mail. We had expected it to be in earlier this week. We have not yet received it. We do recommend you approve this.
Quick question, the 20% local match, you say it can be addressed with an in-kind match?
Correct.
All right, counsel, you're being asked to accept this award, authorize the city manager or his representative to accept the award.
Mayor Phillips, I make the motion to authorize the city manager's representative to accept the award.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That brings us to our last section of public comment. Is there anyone present that may have come in late that wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to go on to the reports now, and I'm going to start with Mr. Willingham. No report from Mr. Willingham, Mr. Bitner?
I'll just report that as your Onwassa representative, that as of Thursday of this week, the Onwassa Board of Directors will begin the formation of an update to a strategic plan for Onwassa, so I will keep you posted as to how that progresses.
Thank you. Ms. Washington?
No report, sir.
Mr. Thomas?
I'll mention that I did get the opportunity to attend the inaugural New River Splash event this weekend at Kerr Street Riverfront, Waterfront, and it was, like I said, the first year they had it, and it was a really nice event. It was not especially a lot of people there, but the people that were there were enjoying it. The kayaks were booked up, the paddle boards were booked up, the artists were having a good time, and I can see that really developing into a signature event for us on the downtown water activity. I want to express my regrets at the passing of Ms. Coleman. I was lucky enough just a couple of months ago to run into her on a Sunday afternoon, and I guess it was kind of telling, but I rented, we were at the Carolina Fish Fry on the Sunday afternoon, so it was great to see her, and we're all going to really miss her.
Absolutely. Mr. Ward?
Just, I know at the joint city-county, we got an update on our transportation planning, our local transportation board, the 300 million or so that we've been blessed to have in road improvements for our community, and we've started the next process. We're working for the next two years, getting the next round hopefully approved in the pipeline. There's some projects that we need in this community, not just in Jacksonville, but we serve most of Onslow County, and we've been blessed with what we've gotten done so far. We've had some blessings from Phil Shepherd, Representative Shepherd, and also Senator Brown, so they've been very helpful to our community, so thank them.
Please. Dr. Wood?
I have several things under the One City moment that we'd like to share. On Friday of this week, a young lady was driving her car, and she happened to have a flat tire on Johnson Boulevard. Well, approximately a half a block away from there was a city parks and recreation crew. As soon as they realized that the lady had a flat tire, they put down their shovels and got up off of their knees where they were pulling weeds in the garden, and they came over without the woman even requesting it, and they changed her tire. Also, one of the city sanitation workers who had gotten off work was in the neighborhood, and when he saw what had happened, he also joined them in changing this lady's tire. They made sure that she was safe, that the vehicle was properly guarded by cones so someone wouldn't run into it while they did that. But this shows you the One City campaign and what it's really all about. Each of us taking care of each other and showing that we are one city. These four employees exemplify the best in the employment base of the city of Jacksonville. Also, on Friday night, hundreds attended the now annual POW MIA Recognition Day Ceremony held at the Vietnam Memorial. This was an opportunity for our community to come together, whether you were military or civilian, and remember those who sometimes are forgotten and still are listed as missing. Saturday morning, with more than 1,300 runners registered for the 13th run of the Marine Corps Half Marathon, I think that's actually, does that say 30th, John?
30th.
Okay, 13th, add a few years, and we get the 30th. So this past Saturday, we had the 30th running of the Marine Corps Half Marathon. It is a tribute to the fallen heroes since 9/11. This year, more than 90 killed in action or during training accidents, and non-combatant related incidents were remembered in the Hero's Mile. Comments on social media reflected the deep impact this installation has had on those who participated in the run. Mr. Thomas has already mentioned this. Saturday afternoon, a new festival was launched at LP Willingham Park and the Riverwalk Marina. The New River Splash is a water-based festival operated by the Jacksonville-Onslow Sports Commission and obviously supported by the city of Jacksonville. Several long-term city residents joined others to try out the first-time kayak or stand-up paddleboard. It is reported that Randy Thomas outran an alligator for at least 100 yards on the paddleboard. The Arts Council had painters competing for the best water-based art painting of the day. Sturgeon City told stories of a river cleanup. The Recreation Department helped with children's activities. Polynesian dancers entertained along with local bands. It was a great event. Hopefully, this will become an annual event and truly showed us as one city. Extending the outreach of our one city beyond the borders of the city of Jacksonville occurred this past Friday. Three members of the city staff joined three members of the Onwassa staff, and they left to go to Key West, Florida to help recover, help in recovery efforts for the sewer systems of that community. Here's a short video showing their encounter.
the Onwassa Jacksonville Consolidated Team because of our extreme experience. Particularly, Onwassa has over 33 miles of water mains on Topsail Island, which is a barrier island. a barrier island here in Onslow County. And, and we have a lot of experience recovering after-storm situations. I'm incredibly proud that we are a consolidated team, first of all. Onwassa and the City of Jacksonville together make an extremely strong team, and I'm also very proud that we're representing North Carolina as the first water utility to go to the state of Florida for relief efforts.
Father God is there down there doing as you sent them to do. Lord God, I pray that you will cover them. Keep a hedge around them, heavenly Father.
It's a historic moment, you know, Florida was devastated, we were devastated in 1996. We know what it's like. You know, they need some help, so these boys volunteered and first time asked, and, you know, it's just a proud moment. I'm proud to be associated with them. Our brotherhood is strong, and, you know, we're gonna see it through. Mayor Phillips campaigned the program, "One City, My City, Our City." We're taking it a step further. This is one nation, my nation, our nation, and our nation is in distress, and our nation needs help, so we're going to send some help to, to help our fellow nation.
Thank you again for your leadership and for what you do for this city. Okay, I'd entertain a motion this time to the adjournment.
Second.
Seeing all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.